Public party.
How far are they from you all? Sammy?
I'd like to call a special meeting of the North Huntington Township Board of Commissioners for Thursday, September 14, 2017, 7:00 p.m. Order, roll call, Commissioner Harrow.
Here.
Commissioner Nagy.
Here.
Commissioner Bertani. Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Passenna.
Here.
Commissioner Cussera.
Here.
Commissioner Martina.
Here.
Everybody please rise for the pleasure of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
If there's any citizens tonight who'd like to speak, please sign the wolf at the podium, and remember the meeting is being electronically recorded and video streamed. We have one citizen, Jen Kazmir. Please state your name and address correctly.
Jen Kazmir, 7546 Natalie Lane, North Huntington. I'm here on behalf of 1981 Clay Pike. It's, I spoke before you guys in October and November about the Hollybrook subdivision. My parents live right below and enjoy the property. I'm just here to find out what the status of some of the conditional requirements they had. I looked through all of the past notes and I was unable to find some of the updates. Big concerns, there have been discussions of increasing the 15-inch pipe to a 24-inch pipe. Also, a 42-inch pipe has been thrown out there. We still have seen no plans from Miranda for any of that. We would like to see the plans that include the elevation, the site grading, et cetera. There has been no approval made for an access road by my parents or Peggy Gongler, who is now the sole owner of the shared driveway. I'm afraid that if these items aren't kept in the public light, that Miranda could possibly begin doing work and, you know, operate under the assumption, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is to permission. And so, I don't want to be put in that position, and I don't want my parents to be put in that position. So, I'm bringing it back to the table, you know, what do we know? That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's our end of citizens for the evening. Andy, can you give us some light on the subjects?
I have nothing to report. We've heard nothing from Miranda. I know they had to get a Corps of Engineers permit because the area along Clay Pike was considered a wetland. To the best of my knowledge, they've not gotten their approval, I've not seen any plans. We were to get plans for the new pipe, larger pipe, additional pipe, haven't seen anything on that. I'm sure they'll wait until they get comments from the Corps of Engineers and DEP before they finalize that, but I've not seen anything yet.
Andy, will there be any other reason why I would come back to the board? By the words, is this just an administrative matter at this point?
It is.
So, how do we keep her aware of what's going on, or is there any way to do that? Give you a hand when we get the final plans?
Well, they still need our permission to keep the access road.
Correct. The problem is, we're kind of a reactive group. We don't do anything until a developer or home builder makes an application. Until that happens, we're stuck. We're not stuck, we just don't have anything to do. It's not right for us to decide anything unless we have a plan or a process.
I understand, I just didn't see it in the minutes, and I wanted to ask.
Well, I would advise you continue to check with Andy every other month basis or something like that.
It hasn't yet. I've been a little surprised honestly that they don't seem to be more anxious, but I'm not sure it's in their hands, I think it's probably...
The last they told us, they would be talking with us in July, and we've heard nothing.
You know better than I do that. Andy, do you have her email address? Have you been emailing her? I do not. Do that.
J K A S S I M E R at gmail dot com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was our end of citizens for the evening. Next item on is a work section discussion topic, 39, discussing tonight. Next item is planning and engineering topics, Mr. Blenner.
There are three items on the agenda tonight. The first is Woodridge Estates Phase Two. This is the second and final plan of Woodridge Estates, which is on the south side of Orange Lake Road. This phase would be 22 single-family homes, I think the first phase is maybe a little bit less than that. But, it's been a long, long time in coming. It seems this plan was developed very, very slowly. The original Phase One was maybe 2004, 2005. But, this has been a long and torturous review process. It originally came in in May of 2016. There have been many, many time extensions, and many, many re-commissions, a lot of additional information provided, eventually the developer switched consultants. But, it was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and they are in favor of approving it. The developer has requested three waivers. The first is a reduction in a vertical curve length on Hemlock Drive from 320 feet to 150 feet. Just to give you a little background, I think this might be helpful, there's a stream that runs down through this property, and Hemlock Drive crosses that stream. GIS, it'll make more sense if you see a photo of it. This pipe, right here, carries the stream underneath Hemlock Drive, it's a five-foot diameter pipe. But, you were limited to 100 foot of stream enclosure by these regulations. So, they made that pipe 100 feet long, came up in a two-to-one slope at each end, and got up to the edge of the 50-foot right of way. And they said, well, that's our elevation for the street. I would prefer, and that's already been built, this has been there for a number of years, I would prefer to not have a reduced vertical curve, but if the option is making those side slopes steeper, which are supporting the road, I think the vertical curve reduction is a better of the two options. It is going to come to a stop sign when it hits... It will come to a stop sign when it hits this street, so it's not through traffic, it's going to be going terribly fast. I think actually it may be a good traffic calming method to try and slow people down before they get to that intersection. So, it's not ideal, but I think if the answer is steeper side slopes, then maybe this is a better way to go. You may remember we had the exact same issue with Greer Street and the second entrance into Dartmoor Estates. All of that vertical curve was really, really abrupt. Second modification is for non-radio lot lines between four of the lots. No objection to that, it's just required by the ordinance that's stated on the subdivision plan, if they're not radio. And finally, concrete monuments are required around the outside perimeter of the plan. I'm not sure why the resistance to this, but we sat down with the developer and worked out a plan to come up with five around the outside perimeter, and four internal monuments, which would appear on the recorded plan, so that anybody having a survey somewhere down the road knows what control they can tie into, and they'll know they're on the original monuments set when the plan was subdivided. The Planning Commission does recommend approval of this plan with four conditions. The first is submission and approval of a revised stormwater management plan. There seems to be some confusion here about whether the new consultant was redoing the plan, or just resubmitting the old plan. We did get an updated plan by the prior consultant, and that's being looked at right now. Approval of the sanitary sewer design and a developers agreement with North Huntington Township Municipal Authority. The application header into a developers agreement with North Huntington Township. And fee and loan money from building permits would be allocated to Indian Lake Park, which is also where Phase One goes. And it's the closest park, it's Crowe Plaza. Any questions? Comments?
One question, Andy. On the concrete monuments, how many should they put in? How many are they asking for a reduction, approximately?
I believe there were maybe 12 or 13 around the perimeter, working from memory.
So, they're going nine instead of 13?
Maybe 14 around the perimeter, yes. And one of the things that Don Housley feels pretty strongly is that maybe internal ones are more useful than external ones, because they're right there along the road, they're where you would expect to find them, you don't have to go down in somebody's backyard, you may have graded, filled, built a shed, buried the marker. Sometimes maybe it's better to have them along the street. So, the thought was, let's put a few around the corners at the outer perimeter, and let's put a few internally, that, again, the whole idea is that somebody can find them in the future. Thank you. You're welcome. Next item is the Nedley consolidation plan on Wallace Drive. This is a consolidation of two existing lots. They are side-by-side lots, and the owner of both those lots would like to combine them into one larger lot, I believe it's so they can construct a detached garage on the adjoining lot. Planning Commission recommends that. There's a graphic that shows how the two sites are. And then finally, the Guatesca consolidation plan. This is a situation where the existing dwelling is on Leo Street, and they also own the lot behind them on Walter Street. This is an area in Sunset Valley where the streets were never completed, there's a very long run of Sunset Avenue and also Walter Street that have lots that have never really been developed, the streets were not built. They own both these lots, they would like to consolidate the two of them into one. They want to build a shed on the back lot, but an accessory used by itself is not permitted unless that's part of the lot on which the dwelling sits, so they want to combine them into one lot. And Commission recommends approval of that as well.
Any questions, Andy?
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan then, for the next topic.
Good evening. Mike Turley asked me to come by and update the board on our new pavement management software that we've been working with for about a year and a half now. I've been pretty heavily involved. Excuse me one second while I get this up and running here. And I just want to give you a brief history of kind of where we started and where we are now. I believe, Rich Albert, you had heard about this early in 2016, like January, February, you had seen an article or read an email or something?
Yes, I was in, so trading over at Cranberry Township, and I got wind of it.
That's what it was. So, then Rich brought it back to the table. Mike and I got involved at that point, saw CMU demoing their product at Southwest Planning Commission, that was February of 16. And essentially what they had done was, they created an app for a smartphone, and you can mount this smartphone on a vehicle when she want, and drive, and it's basically surveying the roads, it's taking video of the roads in real time, and then it takes those pictures and assesses the road condition. So, Mike thought that might be a good idea to pursue, because at the time, the city of Pittsburgh was using it as well as Cranberry Township. So, we got involved as like the third research client, so to speak. So, in April of 2016, CMU came here, outfitted us with the camera, mounted it to the windshield of one of our vehicles, and we had an intern that summer, Matt Stewart, who was tasked with driving the township, canvassing the township, driving up and down every road. The way they recommended was, you need to drive both lanes, so if it's a, you know, through street, you need to go down one way, turn around, and come back to get a full picture of the, of the street. Once that was done, the camera that they gave us was Wi-Fi compatible, so all the files would automatically upload to a server at CMU, they could take that data and analyze it. Now, the whole time, this algorithm that they used was like a learning type of intelligence. It's pretty wild, what they were doing, so they were trying to teach it things, what they were seeing. They would show it images of potholes, images of cracks, and just feed it all this information, it would make a determination when it saw it in real time, in the real world, that it would make note of that, and would give it a score. Okay, so, at that point, once we had all of our roads done, they gave us data back, they exported GIS data to me that I could run through and compare it to with what we had. Now, our survey that was last done in 2013 was based on the pavement management system that I had created in 2009. Now, they're sort of a square peg in a round hole, it was hard to compare both systems. And where there was differences was based on the road segmentation. Previously, I had divided up our roads, not just based on intersections, but based on, you know, where the pavement had been done in the past, where there's clear breaks, they were breaking them at every intersection. And their software was pretty young at the time, so there was some error involved. It seemed to be at that point, they sort of split, CMU and then a company called Robotics was born out of CMU. So, at that point, I stopped dealing with my CMU contacts, and was dealing with the robotics contacts. So, over time, their technology kept improving. So, they were constantly back and forth with us, you know, asking, picking our brains about pavement management, and we were telling them, helping them with their software. So, they wanted to do a pilot program with us, I just gave them a couple neighborhoods of our roads, they did it with their new and improved software, they actually went out and camered the roads, we didn't have any involvement in the actual data collection. And they sent us a system back, it's essentially a cloud-based web map system, kind of what you're looking at now. There was still a little bit of air, they came back out, we drove around with them, Mike and I, we went out with them for an afternoon, and were pointing out different things that were incorrect in what their camera was seeing. So, this whole time, this thing's, it's getting smarter. So then, they came back and said, okay, we got it fixed, we're gonna do your whole township, so they did the whole township in like two weeks, and gave us essentially what you're looking at at the screen. So, I'm gonna kind of go through what you're looking at right now. So, they tried to tailor everything with, to what we had before, so we had the road conditions, you know, level A, B, C, D, F, you know, the five colors, so they broke it down in a similar way. And I had asked them to do road segments. Initially, they gave us road points, and I'll get into that in a minute, but our system was relying on road segments, so what we would get from a segment, if you're looking at this, I zoomed into like the Pennswoods area, if you're looking at a road, the color, level one through five, level five is red, that's the worst type of road. So, if I click on a road, it'll bring up information. So, it's saying that the vast majority of that road is level five. You'll see these other colors here that represents lesser grades, so there are some parts of that road that are decent, and some are not so good, but the majority of this road is bad. Conversely, I'll pull up a green road or a level one road, and you can see the vast majority of that road is level one, it's good. Now, the benefit of having these points, and let me turn off the segments, and I'll turn on the points, is that you're getting a really accurate view of what the road is in reality. So, you'll see all these dots, and this is kind of where the software, the camera comes in. So, if I click on one of these dots, it's gonna pull up a photo. So, it's a snapshot of what the camera was seeing, and we have this for the entire township, so it's a huge data set on their server in the cloud. So, we're able to access this, and the nice thing about this is, we can take a look at it, we can review it, and then I can determine, is that really what we're seeing? So, let me try to move that window. I can make it bigger, but there's a place where I can report if the damage that we're seeing is accurate. It's locking up, let me just bear with me for a second. Like I said, it's a huge data set, so... Okay, unfortunately, you can't see the bottom, here we go. So, it's saying, okay, what you're looking at on this picture is a damage level five. Okay, do I agree or disagree? And then I can put comments in there, like, yes, this is a pretty bad road, you can see some rutting, some patching, some bleeding, all kinds of pavement distresses. One of the things that this program was having trouble with was newly paved roads, newly paved roads were pretty much black, so it was trained to see, you know, anything that's very dark or high contrast is gonna mark it as a negative. Now, if you look at this, this is a shot of St. Clair Drive after it was paved probably less than a year, and it was coming up as damaged, like a mid-level damage, but clearly you can see this is a newly paved road, it was picking up on the seam of the crown that we seal, and the gutter line, which is also sealed, and it was seeing that as a distress, but in reality, that's a really good thing, that's a really good street right there. So, they take information like that, work it into the system, and now they're able to more accurately look at our roads. Okay, so from here, we have this whole data set, the whole township, all that information is at our fingertips. So, from here, they gave me the data, much like CMU did, in GIS form, so I was able to put it into our system, match up the segmentation with what we had before, and Bob Robinson's now working on that, so he's been out in the field the last couple of weeks, and I was able to give him a list of all of our lowest rated roads, DNF rated roads. He's going through those one by one, field checking them, making sure it matches up with what we had, you know, from the software with what's actually out in the field. So, it's becoming a really helpful planning tool with this pavement program, and the beauty of it is, it's a huge time saver, because when I did this survey before manually, going out driving the roads, it would take months. It literally took me probably about six months between time in the field, and you have to work around the weather, because you're dealing with ice and snow and rain, you don't want to look at pavement when any of those conditions are happening. And then I'd have work in the office, I would be post-processing data, crunching data all the time, to finally get some results. They did this in two weeks. I worked probably about two weeks in the office with the data, and now Bob is doing his thing with the inspections. So, it's, it really is a huge time saver, like I said, it's accessible on the web, if Bob has a phone, a tablet in the vehicle, he can access it that way, pull up the data if he has questions. So, you know, Mike Turley has been getting calls from technological companies, magazines, investors that are interested in this company, this Robotics, just to get some feedback. And like I said, we've been working with them, kind of helping them out, they're helping us out, but we were their first paying customer, so that's kind of something to note. So, you know, going forward, I think to do this survey every other year would be very beneficial, and then that next survey, if we were to do it in 2019, would really make a lot more sense with this data now, because as of right now, comparing our 2017 data with the old system, it was, it was a challenge, I'm not, you know, just want to be honest, it was a challenge. But then to get the baseline of this 2017 data, and then to build from that, I think it's just gonna make it really smooth for our program in the future. So, again, Mike just wanted me to come and kind of update you a little bit of the history, where we are now. I believe Bob Robinson is gonna be at next month's meeting with a draft of the five-year plan, based on work from this data, so you might have some questions for him. If you have questions for me right now on the software, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Ryan, what's the highest damage level? Is five the highest?
Five, excuse me, yes, five is the highest. Level one would be a new road, the green road, so level five is the red, level one is a green, and then there's the colors in between. And that was another challenge, because our scoring system from the old survey ranged from five to 100. So, I worked with the people at Robotics to try to extrapolate a number out of 100 to give to us, so that we can compare with our system. So, that was, you know, a little touch and go for a while, but they did get that to us, and we were able to make some good comparisons.
Does that just scan the top of the road to surface height, or is that how far?
No, it's just, it's just like you're taking a picture with your cellphone. It's mounted, it's looking out of the hood of the vehicle, and whatever it sees on the road is... road is what it's taking a picture of and assessing. And they recommend not to do it when it's real sunny, because you'll get shadow from trees and leaves and stuff, so they typically like an overcast day, so that's when they get the best results.
Nothing pertaining to drainage or anything like that, no?
No, I mean, you'll just see stuff, you know, running, cracking, edge failure. You'll see it in the photo, but, and that's what they needed our help with, like, what are we looking at? What does this mean? You know, so we were going over different distresses with them and kind of leading them, just like they were helping us.
Ryan, what's the rundown of the colors? Green would be...
Yeah, green, there's, I believe there's two kinds of greens. Yeah, and these are just arbitrary, I mean, they can change. You know, we have different colors in the house. So there is, level one is a Kelly green, level two is kind of like an olive green, level three is yellow, which would be like our C road. Level four is an orangish color, and then the level five is red.
Okay, yeah, I asked, go off the yellow.
And we can tailor that to however we need. Yeah, and yellow, I mean, typically in the past surveys, yellow or the C group, the middle group, has been our biggest chunk of roads. And for next month, I'm going to supply Bob with some data with breakdowns by ward, you know, mileage of roads, and the DNF roads in each ward, so you guys can get a better picture of what's actually happening in your ward right now.
Okay, and while you're going through this, does it show you the reading while you're going through it, or do you have to go back through it like unis and say, whoa, wait a minute, why St. Clair, no, no, you're right?
Well, when they drove it, they did it all at once. They just came out on their own and drove for two weeks straight. And then they did everything in the office and, you know, crunched the numbers, and then this was, we were given a link to this website with login, so we have login information to view this data. So they have to actually take the data from the camera and convert it.
Okay, so while you're...
No.
Showing the road is red and then yellow or...
So in other words, it's not real time?
No, no. There's a post-processing period to that.
Ryan, it doesn't show nothing like base failure or anything on your knees that the road itself?
No, and that's kind of where, you know, it's helpful to the field checks, you know, if you see a high score, you know, red flags go up, and then when you go out and actually do the assessment, you know, like Bob Robinson's doing right now, he could better determine what the major problems are.
Yeah, it's good base, that's worth, that's gotta be a good work.
Mm-hmm, but this just saves a ton of time, just narrowing that list, funneling that list, and then we can really focus on what we need to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ryan?
Tony, there's just one thing I'd like to add. I may have introduced this, but, you know, if it wasn't for Ryan's expertise in this field, I mean, we'd never be to the point that we are now and working so close with, you know, Carnegie Mellon and Robotics. I mean, this is cutting-edge technology that we're doing here, and, you know, as the board, you guys wanted us to look into ways to improving in the scope of things here as far as technology throughout the township. And this has sure brought us up to the next level of, you know, technology, just doing the work that we're doing, and especially with the work that Ryan's doing. I mean, it's great to be known as one of the leaders here in the region, you know, doing this, and as Ryan said, we're getting a, you know, a lot of accolades for being a part of this. People are calling from all over, you know, wanting information and wanting to become a part of this also. He's done a really great job.
Well done.
Very good job. Good job. Ryan, I did want to ask you, how long did you say it would normally take to review the roads?
The old method, Jim and Ewan and I would get in a truck and we'd be together four months. I mean, not doing it every day, eight hours a day, when it would fit in both of our schedules, still trying to get our daily jobs in there. But we dedicate a couple hours every day, weather-dependent, again, and during December, January, February, you're dealing with a lot of snow, so, you know, we had to pick our spots, but, and then once that was done, I'd crunch all the numbers. That would take me at least a month, month and a half to get everything in a usable format, so it was, it was a huge undertaking for me.
We got this in how long?
Well, this data was driven in two weeks, and they gave us the data probably after about another week, and then I toyed around with it for about two weeks. So, I mean, it cut the time almost, you know, by 75% easily.
Now, there's a potential, is there a potential there to actually do half roads? A half a road if we need to?
You mean a half road?
Maybe I can punch in the road, then it gives you the breakdown of what's bad on the road, correct?
Yeah, and that's where these points come in, is you can look at these segments, which would be the whole road, but if I take off the segments and just put on the points, and let me try to find a good example, but, you know, if there's a road, okay, like Marbury right here, I see a couple red dots right at the beginning, that might indicate a pothole, or it could be like a utility patch that's failed, you know, and there's just different degrees along the same road. So this lets you focus in on the actual bad spots. So if all we need to do is patch it, this will tell us where to do it. We might not need to pave the whole road.
Correct, so that's, could be some money and time to save right there.
Right.
Okay, good work, thank you.
Any other questions for Ryan? Good job, Ryan, thank you.
Yeah, I have something I'd like to bring up. Couple months ago, there were retaining projects about possibly looking to get another dog for the township, school, county, drug dog or whatever, and since we have a lot of deaths in this township pertaining to that, Justin Warman would like to make a presentation pertaining to that. Justin?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Justin Warman, I'm an officer here at North Huntington Township. I was employed here, I was hired in 2007. I've been a full-time police officer since 1996, therefore I have 21 years of experience. Nine of those years were as a K-9 officer in other departments. It's no secret that we have a huge drug problem here as far as heroin and overdoses. As a matter of fact, I saw in a Tribune review the other day that HBO is doing a documentary into the amount of overdoses in the area. Just, I don't know if it was so much a presentation, I was just going to answer any questions. But anyways, a few months back, or actually a month ago, a friend of mine who's a K-9 handler in Poconos, Matt Nero, contacted me. He knew I was looking for a Malawal for the family. His K-9 passed away, and he, his department was in the process of getting him another dog. Just so happened that there was an import dog, a guy in their municipality that imports dogs, who was willing to donate a dog to his department, so therefore Matt was stuck with two dogs. He contacted me and said, hey, man, I know you're looking for a dog. He said, I'm willing to donate it to you. The purchase of that dog, if you were to buy it, was $7,600. So obviously, naturally, I took it. His name's Rocco, he's a 15-month-old Malawal. Since Matt and Joe Lekowski, who's an Appaloosa master trainer, are in the area, they're training their dogs, and being some friends with Matt, he had talked to Joe and asked me, and Joe agreed to let me go through the training with them. So for the past couple of weeks, as a matter of fact, past four weeks, I've been training on my own with Rocco. We've recently certified on narcotics, therefore the dog is certified either on marijuana, heroin, crack, cocaine, and methamphetamine. So he's already certified with an Appaloosa. Not officially, because therefore he's not a dog on the department, but Joe can eventually bless off and say that he's passed certification. We have about two more weeks to go, and then he'll be totally certified in patrol as well. So as a matter of fact, tomorrow ends week four for us. Like I mentioned, the dog purchased, $7,600, the training that Joe's allowing me to go through is $5,500, so therefore the township, if you did decide you wanted to put another dog on, you'd be saving $13,100. You'd have a free certified patrol dog for the township. We have two dogs currently, we used to have three dogs at hand. Colonel Bertani and Mr. Casera, Sergeant Casera, had mentioned about possibly putting another dog on. In two weeks, in less than two weeks, you'll have a, you would have a certified dog that you could put on the road. We also have, just a little bit of other background, Petland, Petland would be willing to donate the food for the dog for the duration of his life, so you'd be looking at cost savings of not having to pay food, as well as Cassie's grooming has said that they would take care of grooming for the life of the dog as well, so you'd be looking at cost savings as well in that respect. We have three patrol cars sitting down in the lot that don't get driven. We've had an SUV down at the road garage, so it wouldn't be like you guys would have to purchase another vehicle, we have plenty of vehicles down there. All that would be a matter is putting a kennel back in there. So like I said, he's ready to go pretty much now, as opposed to waiting until the first of the year, if that was your prerogative to put him on the first year, he's ready to go pretty much within the next two weeks. So just something for you guys to consider, he crushes narcotics, and like I said, we have a huge drug problem, he'd be another force multiplier for this area in our fight against drugs. I know several of you guys, I know that's a major agenda for you as far as fighting the drug problem, and we would have another force multiplier in tackling this huge epidemic that we face every day. So I thank you for your time, just like I said, it's something to consider, you guys would be saving a lot of money. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Justin.
Okay, any further board comments? If not, I need one more question.
Mr. Ed Turner? Second.
Discussion, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it 6-0. There will be an executive session afterwards to talk about the country's many, major positions.
Yeah, that's what we're going to call it.